All right, it's August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, seven thirty P M. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present or myself, John Tehan, Bob Shabbitt, Andy Marco, Doug Roberts, Beckett Sinowski. I'm gonna seat the alternate of Michael Johansson for Joseph Hall and other our other alternate William Benell is present as well. Which there's no applications for receipt tonight, no public hearings tonight, no new business tonight, which brings us to item F. Unfinished business item one seasonal outdoor dining regulations.
This is one that's been pending for a bit, it's been discussed a couple of times, and it's in response to post-COVID legislative changes which require that towns allow outdoor dining associated with a restaurant by right. So this language attempts to just sort of codify what the state has said we have to allow for. We had some comments previously particularly about how the parking allocation would work on site with with the addition of an outdoor patio. So with the exception of one word that I that needs to be removed, C is newly proposed from the last time you saw this has been essentially revised to reflect that discussion and and make the review require that no more than fifty percent of the total parking on site be obligated for the outdoor parking or outdoor dining. Everything else has kind of remained the same and aligns with what we would require based upon the Public Act, but also what would be required for department reviews from fire marshal, building, Eastern Highland, et cetera. This is a draft, so the the next step, if you liked this or if you thought this was fairly close, would be for us to do the referrals to CROG and schedule a public hearing, which you could then, you know, further modify. So we would be looking at September meeting, second meeting in September for a hearing.
And CROG can get back in time?
Um, yes, I I would expect that we couldn't get it for that second meeting.
I I think this is good enough to create referral because it's a public hearing with, you know, obviously we're gonna get folks in, but modified boarding, we have to here input that is good on this here season of the issues.
Yeah, Walter, I don't know if you saw the the parking thing, the first time was had a long discussion on that.
Yeah, I like the wording on this parking reg a lot better than what we had before. I'd say, yeah, let's go ahead and refer it to CROG.
I think so.
We need a motion.
Yeah, probably. Let's see, anyone else on the commission have any?
I just saw the nine o'clock come off time, the second concert, now bad choice word, is that what we do now, like White Hilltop, they they have a nine o'clock end time?
I I don't, I mean, there's any specifics for just the outdoor eating, because it's not, there's music out there too, so I'm just kind of wondering.
Is this, is this restricting what they do? Not, and I'm not far against just saying, does that change how they're conducting themselves today now? I don't know, I can't remember if they do what it's at the nine o'clock or not.
What was they doing?
Do they both, well, this, well, I saw on the belt there on the patio, I think it was nine o'clock.
Yeah, I was wondering about the weekend.
Yeah, yeah, the the kitchen closes at nine. We were there, Bob, you and Christine and I, a couple of the other folks were there, and they closed the kitchen at nine a couple of weeks ago. I'm sorry?
The music doesn't necessarily stop on the patio at nine, does it?
Well, yeah, there there wasn't any music that night that we were there. I was there last Friday as well. They do have music, but we left before nine, so I couldn't tell you.
Just kind of wondering.
Well, music's another item.
Yeah, music's another issue, and and it says here that they'll need a permit for that.
Where do we address that? So I just, I I shouldn't know that, but I don't. That's that's the only thought, I mean, but this might supersede that, but maybe not. We say can't do it after nine o'clock, just because the kitchen's closed. So I mean, everybody's gotta leave, kick them out, can't be on the patio after nine. That doesn't make sense, but the engine tomorrow closes.
I get, well, that's what I'm saying, but that's that's not what this says.
This says the outdoor seasonal dining ends at nine. I don't know what that means. I'm not saying it should be a different hours.
So this is dealing with accessory uses to restaurants, so it's not gonna sort of in a reverse way regulate some of these other items. If you're not sure if it should be nine or ten or eight, we could change it to eleven. Because you could, you can go from eleven during the hearing to ten or to nine or eight, but you can't go, if everybody shows up the hearing, it says nine is way too early on Saturday, you can't go.
Start start higher.
Right.
Well, yeah, just like seasonal, I I'm, if if you're the Huesy Hilltop as an example again, that that patio is not I mean, it isn't temporary for it, it is really part of the restaurant.
It has been.
And it has been, right, but I mean, somebody would say it's still seasonal because you're not gonna, they don't open it in the winter, so it's not open three hundred sixty-five days a year, so thinking of people how how closely many members of, you know, many residents look at our word and 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 just something has struck me. What does the eagle do? I haven't been down there in a long time.
If they're outdoor dining, it's kind of slammed against the side of the building, it's
Yeah, it's more like the smoking area.
And then you have a willing compete, so there's some outdoor dining there, but that, but yeah, they they wouldn't be operating real late.
Right, you're right, but they, then they do, they but
But I I think we there's no harm in starting at eleven.
Yeah.
And listen to, listen to people saying the hearing and yeah.
For most people that for music, that's probably too late, really, I mean, I I think, I don't know what we say about that.
It always seems to end around like ten o'clock.
My great special permit from live entertainment still, but
Right, so this wouldn't, this is just saying that the hours of operation of the patio will not be on that, so as of now, yes, nine P M. In theory would all shut down. If you change the hours to eleven o'clock, it wouldn't then give someone who had approval to do live entertainment that said it had to end at eight or nine, the ability to
Correct, yeah, okay, that that's, yeah, so I'm just thinking that, that you about a business owner. You don't, I hate to make regulations where people are almost immediately in violation of them.
Yeah.
Because it's like to dilute the strength.
In other words, if the kitchen closes at nine, yet people order food at twenty of
Yeah, right, right, they're gonna be there till ten o'clock, and then right away they go, well, how do I comply?
I stopped sorting through today, on a patio, and that doesn't make sense, so. Let's start with a later, I recommend we start with a later time, and then we can always dial it back.
Yeah, we could always reel it back in. I I agree with Walter, I think eleven is probably a decent time.
Yeah, and then then we'll hear what the public has to say and
Right.
hopefully, so. All right. Any, any, what else? Probably need a motion to move this to CROG. You're gonna make the motion?
I I moved the seasonal dining regulations proposed, this commission, we moved on to CROG.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With this brings us to item number two, accessory dwelling unit regulations.
So this is another one that was born from legislative changes as required by Public Act two thousand and one twenty-nine, in conjunction with the Board of Suckin', we opted out of the provisions, which means that all the requirements of that act do not apply to us. But there are still some changes that we've talked about that don't go as far as that act, but do move the needle somewhat on the accessory dwelling unit regulations. So we reviewed at the last meeting a couple, few examples of accessory dwelling unit regs. One of them was Tolland, one of them was Mansfield. The consensus, at least in in my takeaway, was that overall the commission liked the setup of the Tolland regs, but also liked the protections provided by the deed restrictions in the Mansfield regs. So the the revision that's in front of you now sort of marries those and includes all the requirements to alignment, basically, and some of the stuff that we already had, but then also this, if you turn to the second page, the new section, which is owner occupancy required, is is the language more or less, it's it's been simplified and clarified somewhat from what is in Mansfield, because it's a little bit complicated, but it's what requires a deed restriction be placed on the property that the owner be on in one of the units. We ran this by Howard and Say, this was originally contemplated, said I wanted to verify, and he he feels that it is enforceable and and would be likely more enforceable than just a standard violation of the zoning regs. The, so beyond the enforcement, it it creates a situation where the property can't sell with multiple occupants, so if you buy a property and you have the house rented, you have the A D U rented, and then you want to sell it or or re-mortgage it, the title search would pick up the restriction, and at that point, theory at least, if the owner was not on the property, it would be another opportunity for compliance to sort of happen naturally. So that's kind of where this language came from. Question, where it says on A, occupants of either dwelling unit shall be the owner of record, said dwellings or heir. Does that indicate that the heir has to be resident? Let's be onsite.
Yes, it's not the owner of record, if they left it, it's somebody that lived there, that's how you read this, right?
Right.
Good.
Mike, in the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. easier.
Okay, Mike, in the in the current regs, it talks about in-law apartments, and and you know, it seems like that's, you know, within the same home. I don't see anything around those in the accessory dwelling unit regs. Does that mean that we're outlawing in-law apartments? Like, if I wanted to turn my basement into an in-law apartment, I wouldn't be able to do that?
I agree to you, would be the same thing.
Yeah, the in-law apartment is a is a sort of an old term for an accessory dwelling unit. Because as we move the reg to where this is sort of taking it, it wouldn't need to be just an in-law that would live there. Right? Because as the owner, you could have an accessory dwelling unit, then you could rent to a non-related person. So whether the accessory dwelling unit is for someone you you know, like an in-law or or someone that that you don't know, wouldn't matter.
All right, but but what I, my question is, though, the new reg, the proposed regulation appears to contemplate a a separate building. So is there still a facility in this proposed regulation to allow me to turn my my basement of my existing building into an in-law apartment or or an accessory dwelling unit?
That's addressed in K.
Yeah, read item K.
Oh, sorry, maybe I had to go a page now.
But you're correct.
In J, J and K.
You're you're correct in in reading that this reg as proposed does not prohibit a detached accessory dwelling. The the current reg that we have would, the public act is one of the things that they suggested, so this wouldn't, this would not prohibit that.
So, okay, all right, thanks.
Right, that would be
exact allow. Under the seven, seven oh five, separate family quarters, what is the problem with a separate outside entrance? I, Rebecca, I think you mentioned.
That that's what I was gonna ask about. D says nothing on the front, but in nowhere does it say that that accessory dwelling needs its own outside entrance.
But it says that there shall be no separate, why?
On the front, I understand on the front, it just says front, but I worry that someone might read this and miss something and not put an outside egress or on to that, wherever that is, that that should have or be addressed somewhere, that unit needs its own entrance.
So the the existing reg says there shall be no separate outside access, and that is purely sort of with the old school thinking of if its interior connection is
Now it just can't be on the front.
Right, and that, that is really the purpose of that is to prevent it from creating more of a duplex situation where you have a single structure with two units.
Okay.
That's so.
It's good that line or somewhere near there also say that it should have its own entrance for safety.
They're thinking fire safety.
Yeah, I am totally thinking, yeah. If you've ever been into some of the places in Stafford or Wayal Manic, they they chop those buildings up and you get into a maze and and that's where I come from, in that quiet.
Technically, by building code, you have to have two means of egress to meet the requirements.
So you can have them out of the main house and not out of the accessory dwelling.
Oh, so like a slider on the patio and
Yeah, it's considered.
But with the, if you have the accessories in it, I need to have three entrances, you know? Now, just, just, I haven't, I haven't thought about this for a while. Now, in the event that the house, the the way it's constructed or something, doesn't allow for a side door, for whatever reason, then you could go to the zoning board of appeals and 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 use that vehicle to say, look, my land doesn't really allow me, I need to put it on the front.
Yeah, I suppose, though, yeah, you'd have to
It would seem unlikely that it would be, that'd be a land hardship and not a financial hardship, but that would be a vehicle for someone to explore, I think, don't the need, ask.
Like, what I don't know is how the building code plays into this, right? So whatever the building code requires is what they have to, I I
So so indeed, if we just remove the first word, no, so it read new entrances for an accessory dwelling unit may be added, may not be added to front facade of a principal building, that kind of takes the saying that, yeah, you're gonna have to have a new entrance? I don't know, to me, no, just kind of throws it off a little bit. I don't know.
Oh, you said take out no new, just put the word not.
Well, or or just new entrances for an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, how about this, new entrances for an accessory dwelling unit may be added except to the front facade of a principal building.
Well, do you want to allow it, or do you want to require it?
I would think I did almost double check with the fire marshal, but probably shouldn't have one. Well, unless, if he says, nah, it's not, I I just, to me.
There's a reason why you're saying you didn't want, why is that? I mean, what was the thought? No new entrances, what, why?
On the front, only only from an aesthetic perspective.
Now it looks like an apartment.
A duplex, yeah, but so we can really what I think you're contemplating is if there should be language that says that an accessory dwelling unit shall include a separate outside or direct access from the outside or whatever.
Yeah, except on front of the building.
Yeah, what I'm trying, what I don't know is if there's a situation where where was that zoning reg creates a building code problem based upon how a particular structure is. And I don't know if you had like a single entrance and or if you have maybe, I don't know, raised ranch or something, or you have one door in and the lower level was one, you know, basement unit, how do you create that separate outside? I don't know, it's a building.
Yeah, I don't think it would be dependent on if the raised ranch is a fully, it shouldn't be a sub-basement, the basement should be all the way down, so it should be able to put a door in. I grew up in a raised ranch, and we just, our second exit was out the garage. Because there was always that into the garage, it's the lower level. I think split level into this, that's split level, like a true split level, it has a funkiness to it with a hill like beer, if you have an outside entrance.
My opinion, it shouldn't matter. Somebody's taking a ranch or a cape and converting it to a duplex to make an accessory dwelling unit, and then add another front door to it. Okay, so.
Oh, that's what front doors are, you know, center of the building, move both of them.
But it doesn't, like, doesn't matter? I mean. Main entry door, you got a side garage doors, two entrances into the house on the front. What if one of them was actually an entrance to your A D U, and the other one was the entrance to your
Yeah, but you're not adding a new one. You're not adding a third, like this is a brand new little hole.
This thing fills them, you know, building codes and everything, you're putting it up and so forth, I'm I'm not the aesthetics police, somebody wants to make the front of their house look funny, that's, that's their business, I guess, but the you have to think long and hard, but for doing this anyway, what you're doing to the value of it and so forth, but I I don't know. Feel like the door cow.
Yeah.
There are legitimate reasons people want to do this, income, so forth, you have to keep a family, baby.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I was thinking about that too, about how let me do to students in today's universities even are even able to work their way through college anymore? I mean, does, are these small units, are they even popular for students? I mean, how many?
There there was a pretty big article and and A A R P just put out on this whole subject and then everything and they 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 do random like that, there's there's various avenues, you know, for it, but because a lot of people, they use the term, a lot of people want to age in place, so having
Well, right, that's, I'm I'm a big supporter of that, I absolutely believe in in people being able to stay in their homes as long as possible, and particularly if you get less ambulatory, a different different type of arrangement could be very beneficial, allowing you, allowing you to stay in your own.
And they have the whole throw and con thing, the concerns people have on the whole concept of it, but you know, there's a lot of pros, there are.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious how many students actually I mean, I see students like to rent houses, but they seem to be able to afford some pretty nice houses for rent. I'm wondering how many of, just thinking back when I was a young student, we were at the rooms all the time.
Well, you rent a place in Woodhaven where you could have a party and everything, it'd bother you.
Yeah.
Rent a room in somebody's house and you know, Paul Hill Road or something, and they go over so well, but
Well, these could help us with affordable housing.
Well, I thought that was an interesting observation.
How do they count toward toward that?
Uh, they provide housing options which are more attainable, but unless
It doesn't count toward our total.
Unless they were deed restricted, right, and it's quite possible that people that have their family living there would would be restricted, and I know there are circumstances where that's happened.
Most people are gonna get as much money as they can.
Right.
Get rid of that, they're not gonna be restricted.
Yeah, I mean, to build a detached accessory dwelling unit in, like, you're you're probably still looking at two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, right, yeah, and so you know, but but if if that allows you to to reduce, you know, a family member on a separate piece of real estate, or allows you to care for somebody.
Yeah, right, that's what would be the, yeah.
So there's, yeah, there is value, but creating it brand new is not
cheap. Check the prices.
An accessory, is that, is there a limit on the size of them?
Yes.
So it wouldn't be one, that's a kitchen and bathroom and a living room.
Thousand square feet or
That that would be huge, that would be huge, I have a three-bedroom house and I found her a thousand square feet.
It's the lesser of a thousand or forty percent.
Somebody has a three hundred thousand square foot house is
Well, holy cow, but one, no more than one bedroom.
Yeah, no, here's, here's a way to look at it, might not be good. What if somebody builds an A D U so that they can live on a single floor, you know, retirement?
Yeah.
And then rents their house, like four or five students.
That would probably be doable under these regs.
It it would be, I don't know if it's
You can stop some have happened. Well, I think the important thing is that the owner is there to police it.
Right.
And that was something that
Most owners aren't gonna want to sit there and have like a party of the police called and then deal with that, because that's not gonna go over too well.
I suppose I would of the, you know, the existing house, because usually these
kids come in, then, you know, because there's five renters, there's five cars.
I assure you, people have been violating these rental things all over town for years, you know, this is, there's there's people renting with students now, they're short of renting, they're not family members now, whole houses. You know, and and so just keep that in mind. It's all happening already.
Hey, Mike. On the second page towards the bottom, seven oh seven, oh five oh two, paragraph A, sub-paragraph V. These restrictions should not be modified or removed without the consent of the town of Mansfield. I think we want to change that to Wellington.
Kind of reduce your workload, but, okay?
They don't care.
So something else that kind of plays into this is that the codification project, which we talked about, just kind of going through the regs, getting them all reorganized and posted online with town's ordinances, et cetera, so that project is set to begin October first, so I have to provide copies of all of our regulatory documents on October one. So any regulation that's not adopted basically then is sort of gonna get hit on, put on pause for a fair amount of time while they organize and analyze, because we can't be modifying things while they're looking at it, so you know, this is something that I think would, given the amount of public input we've had previous, would be good to have in that transmittal. I think thinking the same, along the same lines as the hours of operation, with the understanding that you can dial it back or or further modify, but to get it in for the review, because this would also obviously go to CROG, you could modify D to say that accessory dwelling units shall include a separate outside entrance, not located on the front facade of the principal building. Between now and the hearing, I can talk to the building official to see if he has concerns about that creating some circumstance where where someone is either violating the building code or violating the zoning regs, and and we can see what that brings for the hearing. It's a, you know, it's an option, if you're not, if you don't think it's ready, then that's my two, but
Well, I like the idea of requiring a separate entrance, I just don't, I think like Doug said, I don't really care if it's in front of the building or not. I don't know if that, I'm not sure that that really
But you're saying like that that part, that piece of that sentence could be taken now at the public hearing, the whole front facade part. You can just leave it in for now, so it's there, but it can be removed later.
But like
But we can add it in.
Right, we can, we can, what is it, the sort of the rule, we can make it less restrictive, but it's hard to make it more restrictive, is that, well, is that kind of what we go by?
You can make it more restrictive, you can narrow the scope, I mean, it's it's not exactly based upon restriction, but it's the idea that when someone reads a legal notice and understands that you're creating a regulation about the following thing, you can't then make a bunch of modifications, so the intent of the notice is law. You can't then make a bunch of modifications, so the intent of the notice is law, sure, I understand, so some of this stuff. You know, like these items, that we don't fundamentally change the scope of the regulation because you add or subtract an entrance. Language. If you were to say, we're gonna remove the restriction on a thousand foot cap, that's a different story, right?
That changes the whole.
Yeah, so this stuff is small enough that.
Okay.
We don't run afoul of a notice issue.
That's all I got on that subject.
Yeah, I don't have any more. John, you're good.
I'm good, yeah, do we need a motion to send us to crack?
No, we have motion.
No, that's for the other.
No, the motion was for the other item.
Well.
Yeah, so we we would have to make another motion to send us to cry.
Oh, so you're gonna strike D or leave it in? What are you worried?
What would you prefer?
I do.
Yeah.
Personally, strike it.
Well, I I like the fact that he put in that it shouldn't have its own. Entrance to.
I think a separate entrance is a point for.
So where is the?
Or where, where it is.
I've got one question between B and C, where B is describing what it shall have. And then C, it's just saying it shall include no more than one bedroom, but not saying you actually have to have a bedroom.
So B, B is. Language which is really focusing on making sure that you have a bona fide dwelling unit and not just. Something on a plan and then you cram as many people in it as you can, because the dining room becomes.
Like an extra bedroom.
Right, which is, you know. It's a huge problem in Mansfield where their regs actually say like they want a place where you can have. Storage and where a family of four children can. Because they would just throw it down on the plan, no floor plan, and then walls and partitions go up and now it's a four bedroom.
Cubicle halls and there you go.
Yeah, exactly, so um there, that's what B is, and then C is meant to. Prevent anything more than a one bedroom, because the Public Act limits it to a one bedroom.
Okay.
I I kind of agree, though, that this is kind of unclear. By saying shall include no more than one bedroom, it seems that zero bedrooms would be an option. Perhaps we should say that, you know, the accessory dwelling unit shall be a one bedroom. And no more than one bedroom or something along those lines.
Only one bedroom.
So. Um, shall be one bedroom only.
Right, so it would, I could strike.
Then no more than.
Right, no more than, and it would say accessory dwelling shall include one wide bedroom, there you go.
Yeah, one one bedroom, no more. Something along those lines.
What do you want to do with the front door? What are we doing?
I thought we were gonna leave that in until we have public hearing and see what happens to it.
I can go either way. I'm not married to it, now it's.
Yeah.
Be interested to see what the public says and for.
Good.
Good. All right.
So add the language. To say accessory unit dwelling units shall include a separate outside entrance, not located on the front facade of the principal building. Or for that version, and then you'll see what the hearing.
Yep, okay.
So that will replace, that language will replace D. And then we'll strike that line from C. And.
Change the back page of Mansfield line.
All right. I'll make a motion to for our proposed regulation seven point oh seven dot oh five, such a dwelling unit to CROG. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Item three. Affordable housing plan.
This is another one that's been lingering, I know it's one that is, you know, massively exciting. Um, but we we do have to get it adopted, so we've gone through a couple of re- revisions and tweaks. We had the listening session, we had some feedback. Um, so we're we're at a point right now where the draft sort of reflects. That and the draft that is in its current state is also what was reviewed by the public and and was at least made available. So um. The next step would be, you know, essentially doing a final layout, getting it. You know, having it professionally laid out and then um. The commission would adopt it. Um, there'd still be opportunities for minor revisions and tweaks if there were some language that needed to be clarified, but. Um, we wouldn't want to make wholesale changes and start adding in pages of of stuff at that point, so. If we think that there's no reason to continue sort of. Um, letting it sit, then we can have that. Uh. Have it. Put together sort of formally and then bring it back for the commission to review for any final modifications within adoption. You had a hearing on the plan, so unless you fundamentally change it. Wouldn't need to have another one, statute doesn't require you have one period. Um, you chose to, but you're not obligated. So the next step would be for that to get completed and then. Hand it to you guys for a final review, but I just wanted to to get your feedback before you let me prove it.
Pretty extensive discussions that don't matter over and over again. And I'm not sure what more we're gonna. Add, but I think we should put it together and then have our final discussion, if any of you spots anything at that point, and they want to tweak.
Right. I agree, but.
I agree.
Okay, so what do we need to do with this one, to just?
Yeah, there's no motion.
Need a motion, I guess.
We'll we'll get that all laid out in in the final edits and then when it's done, we'll bring it back.
Sounds good. All right. Brings us to I M G approval of minutes.
I I couldn't find the minutes anywhere to review.
Okay, look in front of me here, I wasn't at the twentieth meeting, but I was at the sixth, so. Do we want to just punt it to the next meeting, so John has a chance to review all?
They are, they are online. The the motion. And under agenda minutes. Yeah, okay.
They're online on the uh town of Wellington website?
Yep.
Ah, sorry, I was on the wrong page.
You want us to wait while you take a look through, John?
Uh, yeah, can we come back to this or just take a minute to go through?
Yeah.
Let's move on to H and then we'll swing back to to G, item H, uh, CROG, comment letters for under correspondence.
Yeah, so um we just had. Do. Um, I think some sporadic communication from progress with the uh. Referrals, they, there were the come, the referrals that we make, they divide common letter back and so they copy us on those um. Other town referrals as well, so I just. Now that we're getting them all, I wanted to just start including them. So uh, I'll go through them quickly, um, there's a referral from West Hartford pertaining to modifications of regulations for specialty. Design districts pertaining to infill development. The town of East Granby is adopting text amendments pertaining to um bed and breakfasts, valid daycares, churches, director establishments. Um, and associated accessory uses. As well as uh a general reorganization of their zoning reg overall. Canton is proposing to adopt regulations pertaining to agricultural buildings and structures of. One thousand square feet or less. Uh, Stafford zoning amendment regarding electronic message and changeable copy signage for municipal or civic engagement uses. That's, that's it. Obviously, the uh piece of correspondence that we have.
John, you need more time, you're good.
Um, I'm good.
Okay, so that brings us back to approval of minutes, uh. The minutes of uh June sixth, twenty twenty three.
I think it's motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, second.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes of uh June twentieth, twenty twenty three, I'm gonna have to stand because I wasn't here, but.
I will stay if you want.
Yeah, I'll I'll move that we approve the minutes from the second, from the June twentieth meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Walter.
Yeah. Yeah.
I.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just like popped into my head, the accessory dwelling units have nothing to do with Airbnb's, right?
No, there's language in there that says that they can't be rented for less than ninety days.
Okay.
Yeah.
I it just was, I don't know why it popped into my head.
All right. Somebody will try to pull it.
Oh, I bet it's going on me, don't worry.
I'm sure it does, that's why. Says that we.
There goes. There goes my treehouse, I was building a treehouse out back for an Airbnb, see what you did to me?
Hopefully you got a permit on said treehouse. All right. So brings us to item I, public participation. Any uh any public comments? Hey, anyone here in the room? No? Okay, anyone online? Okay. Gonna go to uh item J, staff report and discussion, item one, P Z C I W I. W A combined commission. Do you wanna give us some?
Yeah.
Background on this, please.
So we are um. In a position now, we currently have two members on our inland's commission, one which is in the room. Um, we at at most, I think it's a seven member board at at most, since I've been here, we've had four. Uh, we then went down to three and and um we're now at two, so. Technically speaking, don't have enough for a quorum. The tenants is not an issue, the tenants is an issue across. Every board in in every town. Um, but the the a little bit of a different animal with wetlands because. An applicant in theory, though, we don't have applications pending or anything like that. Um. Can effectively petition the state for review of an application. If the town doesn't do what it is obligated to do in its review, and then the state can find and or assess fees to the town. For any costs associated with the review. I'm not saying we're gonna get there, but um there are several towns which have effectively combined their land use boards. Um, or planning and zoning in wetlands um for a number of reasons. Um, this is not something that could just be done, would likely require ordinance. Um, but sort of as a as as an initial discussion point. Um, and given that we had a meeting coming up and we don't have meetings currently happening for wetlands, wanted to at least. Have a discussion about that, would involve obviously this commission and in wetlands. Um. Nothing changes from a statutory perspective, you are wearing two different hats, um, so there's. There's no blending of process. It would essentially be um similar to how the Wetlands Commission also administers the forestry regulation. Separate statutes, separate process, separate decision making, just the same people. Um. So. The hope is that. We. Don't have any issues because we'll have more members and frankly. Just putting this on the agenda has generated a lot of energy around the subject and I think we'll probably be okay, but. We do need to have a plan if we can't pull something together because we can't. Not have members on on that board in particular. Um, so this was really just intended as a discussion point to bring it up as. Something that is possible in in the universe, there's no, there's no plans in motion, there's no, there's no um. Discussions that have occurred, this would be a lengthy process, um, but I wanted to at least. Bring it up.
What does it do to meetings? That's my only question, is it increase our meetings or does it make them the same too?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, so Mansfield is the closest town that has combined commissions, so they're they're uh inland wetlands meetings happen. Immediately before planning is on.
Same night, just.
That's how, that's how, yes, they they, there's our part earlier, um, so. It would. If a if a wetlands meeting is an hour and planning is only means now, I'm not, it may not be two hours, because. Generally speaking, you're more familiar with an application by the time you have a planning interview, because you've gone through that. But yes, for this commission, it would mean more.
Would it increase the size of the commission?
That is a little bit harder to answer because um. It would be done by by ordinance, um, and so there's a lot of different ways that you can do it. Uh, you you could increase the size. Um, there's there's a, different towns have gone about it in different ways. Towns will also do this if they have separate planning and zoning commissions and they combine them to one, or, because they're, you can't. Not gonna have like a like a sixteen member board, but um. Yeah, it would be a long process. Um.
But Mike, um, is the uh inland wetland uh right now an appointed position? Because we have to be elected on the P Z C, right?
Yes.
So it's appointed?
Right. I don't like this.
It it would almost seem like we would have to be sharing our responsibilities with an appointed, with a couple of appointed members, I am not sure. How that would work.
It's not even that, it's just. To to me, it's best to have these separated, because you've got some oversight on one side, but for it comes to us, this is like, looks like the fox in the hen house almost. To me, I I it just doesn't. Yeah, maybe you could do it. But that doesn't mean, it it doesn't feel quite right.
And wetlands is first.
Yes, yes, and you don't want the very people like making the wetland decision, like all of a sudden, like, you know, you're. Yeah, you you're heads, your your mind's already three steps ahead of what you're gonna be doing, like, you know.
Yeah.
You know, one of one of the things that I've attended. A lot of inland wetlands.
They're very thoughtful sometimes, you know.
Over the years, and I think to ask. This commission. To. Obtain. The knowledge and information that is required of the inland wetlands is asking us to do. Twice of what we're asked to do right now.
Yeah, what what also comes.
And it's more technical, I believe.
No, I I agree with you, and part of like what what I'm thinking about, remember the truck stop years ago? Remember all the testimony and everything, a lot of it very good testimony and and well thought out.
Yeah.
So, you know, that. You're gonna lose something there.
Well, I think it's good to have that separation.
I don't know how you could review an application for in the wetlands. And not. Be. Just the actual word, prejudging what you're bringing for planning itself, how could you not? Keep it separate.
Well, I I just think there, there's gonna, there there would be an awful lot of blowback. From the public and especially with social media now, oh my god, it would be. Unrelenting.
Why? I think we do have to have a plan because if no one signs up.
Well, hopefully somebody does, you know, a- after, uh, maybe they read some of the minutes of tonight and.
I think.
If you can find somebody without any gray hair.
But I I think there have been some folks that have reached out to the to the uh board of select mail. So hopefully it isn't an issue, and yeah, it it. It is an additional level of complication and not something that. Yeah, I I personally think is is warranted, but. When you have a situation where. You don't have.
Worst case goes to D E P, they they render the decision and the town gets charged for what they do, that's the worst case.
Maybe that's not a bad.
Well.
Well, right, you go on a fine rather than.
Well, because it's not, it's not the town will pay an application fee, it's that deep will do whatever it needs to. And whether that charges for the higher of their technical person or have an attorney, I mean, the the. The the attorney for the state or whatever had to review our forestry regs and it took them. Months just to be able to sign off on their required revisions to our forestry regs, rather than like. I don't really wanna be sitting for an an undetermined amount of time, hoping that deep will issue a favorable approval on someone constructing a house. In a Nupton review.
No, no, of course not.
Well, I'm hoping to get Steph up and like, you know.
Yeah.
Put put some new life in that commission now that people are leaving, you know what? A lot of people like to. Complain and say things that these are all volunteer positions. Come on, you know, there's, there's, there's openings, do it. Takes time though, takes time out of your, out of your month, out of your year.
But it's sign up as a transfer station that you're looking for. I mean, I think.
But there's already stuff on the uh, on the on the town website and everything, so.
Well, it's it's almost like shut up or shut up. Really, you know, it's a, it's a harsh way to put it, but you know, there's not, it's pretty easy to criticize, but I don't see a lot of people showing up.
You're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem.
There was an article in the Connecticut Mirror this past week. Questioning whether or not um, town meetings are even effective way of governing anymore. Like in New England because of participation.
Well, yeah, you have a handful of people making decisions for your town when people don't show up.
Yeah.
That's.
The founding fathers would love to hear that, wouldn't they?
Well, in uh, in Massachusetts, where I'm from, we had elected town meeting. You had to actually be elected in order to vote at town meeting. Any resident could speak. But the only people who could vote were elected town meeting members and I liked that. I I was, I served in town meeting for years and uh, it it uh, it worked well.
But you go to other states, people look at doing as a local government or. Good representative government at a, at a, you know, a low level.
And Alice Jefferson did.
Oh, wow. Very well, I I guess my opinion is I'm not a fan of combining, but I don't know how the rest of the commission.
I I, I I agree, Walter. I wouldn't be a fan of this at all.
Yeah, for a reason. It's worked for years. I think we need people to step up and and fill the vacancies.
Um, so other than that, on a staff report, um, we are in the process of. The the scanning project is underway, so.
Um, what kind of progress you making?
So they took a hundred and fifty boxes. Um, and they, so they've given us our first two boxes back so we can review everything.
Um, what's the damage level? One of the things they're scanning.
We have gone through and pulled all of the destroyed documents from the files because they. If it's dirt and mold, like it can't be scanned. Um, so that stuff has been removed. Um, so, you know, we hope to get a significant chunk of the of the file scanned. Um, we will hopefully have things, it shouldn't take them too long to get through it. But the first box looked pretty good. I mean, they're literally going through folder by folder and unfolding every. Inspection report and every plan. I mean, anything that's in those, anything in the drawer they scan.
How many years then?
All of it.
Pretty funky stuff in there.
Yeah, that and that's the problem. When when I presented this to the Board of Finance, I said, you know, the issue we have is if someone comes in and says I have a bad foundation, I want them to report it. I can't tell them who did because that stuff was not cataloged. So it's just in a drawer, but it's not alphabetized or here's land use, here's building. So I got, unless I look through the eighty drawers of stuff that we've got. I don't know where it is, so this will allow us to, to see what we have and then move it over so that it can be publicly available. So we've got that. I I talked to you about the codification, um, which will be starting in October. So um, that'll be something that is underway. We are, we had. Uh, in, in early July, I think, uh, we had our ninety percent design review meeting with CROG for the. Streetscape stuff in South Wellington. We received, so we had that. We've started the encroaching process with DOT. We've got our favorable recommendation from the state historic preservation office because it's a historic area, so they need to do a review to make sure the project will not have impacts. So that has been done. Um, so once we get the encroaching process with DOT, then we have our final design and we go to bid and construction. It's the streetscape, so it's, it's removal of the old sidewalks, installation of new sidewalks, ADA and um.
Basically from Hall's Pond to the school?
From the school to the end of the mill. Um, there are also, I think, three pedestrian protected crossings. So there will be an island in the middle of the road in front of the school. That if a pedestrian is crossing and someone is traveling at seventy six miles an hour, like they seem to frequently do. There'll be a place there um, for pedestrians, someone in a wheelchair, whatever, to rest or have a a safe spot. Um, there'll also be the beacons, which some of which are already up because they were installed by DOT, the flashers. Um, so those will be there as well.
What's that gonna do to the million project compared to the pedestrian?
So these should be constructed on top and it will be after, so we we won't be doing any. I mean, other than doing pavement work right where they're happening, it's not gonna require that we rip anything up. And uh, ADA improvements to all the ramps, the sidewalks will be constructed so that they have a proper width. So that um, people can walk on them. So, yeah, I don't know the total linear distance, but it'll be between both. And uh, it will also involve uh, hopefully the realignment of, what is it, any hill extension? So you have that arm that comes out from the parking lot and then comes down, so that whole piece, and it's not wide enough for two vehicles. So the hope is that we'll, we can remove that and then we're gonna, we'll we'll add a legitimate. Properly designed entrance to the parking lot, so vehicles will be able to come in and it it shouldn't. If we can do the striping, it'll go to a one-way flow so that. You don't have all these people competing between Penny Hill, the end, school, parking lot, and then traffic on River Road, it's. It's a really uh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I get uncomfortable just making that entrance in a vehicle. I can't imagine if there was a bus or a fire truck or a snowplow or whatever, so. We're trying to move that stuff as fast as we can. But it's a process.
Oh, was there any assistant?
Yes, I I I won't um, put her on the spot and make her speak or or give any type of public presentation, but um, Evelyn uh, is our new assistant land use agent. She started yesterday. Uh, welcome, Evelyn.
Hey, well, hey, Evelyn, welcome.
We.
Thank you.
We, I, when I was talking to her, Peggy's out this week, so I said you can start when Peggy gets back or you can man the fort on your own for the week. And she was more than happy to man the fort, so um. Uh, she's gonna be getting rolling with everything and and we'll start seeing her meetings, but um. Yeah, it's good to have that position.
All right, anything else?
That's it.
All right, it is uh, uh, eight twenty eight. EM meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.